Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 18th, 2016. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief moment of invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets, we are mindfully aware of the many troubled points that are facing our world today and all the terrible circumstances that are surrounding many of the events that we hear about almost on a moment-by-moment basis. I think this leads us to appreciation of what has turned out to be in reaction to the world's scene, I think, a dramatic outpouring of support and good wishes on the parts of our constituencies toward those from our community who are serving in the public safety arena. And one only need to walk into the various facilities around town and see the dropping offs of bakery goods and handshakes of appreciation and letters of commendation and kind comments that are being said by citizens in our community about the great job that's being done by the men and women who daily protect us from all the things that are floating around in the world. We are very, number one, thankful and ask for a special blessing to be showered upon all those who are serving for us, but we are also ever thankful for what it seems to be the strong commitment and sentiment of support that exists within our community for all those who are doing their jobs so ably in our streets. So we just ask and thanks tonight for that blessing that has been showered upon our community and with the hope that it continues for generations to come. As always, tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that all those men and women are shown a special blessing along with all those from our country who are serving with them as they go about their valuable mission of defending our liberties. Tonight, we ask for direction and guidance as we act on the various affairs of business before us, knowing that each member of the council is here who, in their own hearts and minds, are trying to do the best that they can on behalf of the citizens, both for today and in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Rosado, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atech.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Lottermann.
Here.
Saron.
McFadden.
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present in account for us, so we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four on the agenda, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Atech, do you have anything?
No, there are none.
All right. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman, Atech, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the home minutes for June 21st, 2016; June 2016 building report; historic preservation minutes for June 13th and June 27th, 2016; Washington Wilson Tiff five eligibility findings; approvals July 15th, 2016 payroll in the amount of $786,132.29; accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,529,720.76; City Council minutes for July 5th, 2016; approval of the Water Street Studios BEI loan forgiveness for year seven; approval of the Class B five liquor license for the Pride of Batavia BP Amico; Resolution 16-60-R authorizing agreement with Thorn Electric Incorporated for the 1801 Suncast Lane electric service installation for an amount not to exceed $190,279; Ordinance 16-40 amending Title VIII of the Batavia Municipal Code Regarding Electric Rates and Metering. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Alderman, Atech, second, Alderman, Fisher, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lottermann?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Moving to item number six, I guess we're going to just, we had a workshop that started here at 6:30 tonight between the Batavia Park District Board and the Batavia City Council. And the two items of discussion that were on the agenda tonight, one was a discussion about the future of the Fox River through downtown Batavia, the future specifically of the Depot Pond, and I think there was widespread commitment of support for that in the Batavia governmental arena. And secondly, there was a discussion about the future of the, I'll call it the Challenge Dam up on the north end of the downtown area, and it was, at the end of that discussion, there was a consensus agreement between both boards that the staffs would be directed to procure some professional representation to come in and take an updated look at the situation on the river as it surrounds the dam and be in a position to give us some recommendations as a community as to where we may want to try to go and lead some community conversation in the near term. So that is the conversation on that one. Secondly, we had a conversation about the proposed Flag Day monument that is being discussed by various bodies in town, and we set a date of, I believe, September the 5th to have an updated, September 6th, to have an updated meeting with the park board, in which they hopefully are going to be in a position after the staff has some chance to digest it all, to come in with some updated recommendations on placement and as where we, how we are going to conveniently move it into the community and make it something that will be a great pride to the community, because there's a lot of conversation that this could be quite a regional attraction for, given the intensity and the proud nature of design that that thing seems to have, so we want to make sure that when we do this, we do it right. So anybody have anything further you want to add to what I just said? That's kind of where we're going with that discussion. So then moving to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody here, I know why most of you are here, and I don't think you're here to yell at me at the moment, but, okay, nobody's in that one. Then we'll move to item number eight, which is the Main Street Minute. I did see the Executive Director here, Jamie Som.
That's not working at all, huh? There we go. Let's make some adjustments there. All right, so if you were around downtown Batavia this weekend at all, you saw that it was packed down here, so thanks to everyone who made that happen. It wasn't just the kids and adults Pokemon-ing around the Riverwalk, it was the awesome crowds at the farmer's market again this weekend. Saturday morning, 8 to noon, if you haven't been out, we are hitting about 2,500 people plus every single weekend. As you heard, last month, we have brought SNAP, which are food stamp accessibility, to the farmer's market, so we're now able to provide local fresh food to everyone in our community. On top of that, we just received the grant for the match, which means that people are receiving a double coupon. Some numbers that I had from that, since we started the SNAP program in June, we have seen over $600 in just SNAP card purchases, which is awesome. So these are people who use food stamps that would only have accessibility to grocery store purchases, who now can come down to the farmer's market and buy fresh local produce, as well as, two weeks ago, we started the match grant, and we've seen over 200 coupons go out and used in that match program, and that is just for fruits and vegetables. So that's awesome to see that in the hands of those people as well. Along with this weekend, obviously through the month of July and some of June, we've had tons of volunteer hours donated. So we saw 235 hours donated by 75 volunteers. A lot of that was spent on our Cocktails in the Park fundraiser, but, you know, with those numbers, we just really see how valuable our community volunteers are, so I just encourage all of you to step up and get involved, because it's super helpful to bringing people into downtown and the life and energy that we have down here. So cocktails in the park, I know many of you around this table were there, and many other people in this room, I think, were there as well. We had a fantastic evening, we couldn't have asked for better weather. That is our Batavia Main Street Annual Fundraiser, and our goal this year was to raise 15,000, which would have been higher than we had raised in the past, and just preliminary numbers, we know that we raised probably about 5,000 more than that, so we're looking at $20,000, and that is all from people in this community and some from surrounding communities coming and supporting our downtown at just an excellent event right down here. You know, those dollars that we raise are going to be turned around and reinvested in our downtown for events like Bat Fest, the farmer's market, obviously, Egg Hop, as well as helping out the local businesses down here, helping to promote downtown Batavia as a place to live, work, and play. So we just love all of that community support. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting out the date for Cocktails in the Park 2017, and you guys are going to put that on your calendar, because we think we hit about 500 people, and we're not going to want to go too many more than that, so you'll want to get your tickets early. Planning has begun for the Downtown Block Party, which is another one of everybody's favorite events in downtown. That will be on Labor Day, Sunday, September 4th. Back again this year, we have Dick Diamond and the Dusters, they're the fun band that dresses up in costumes and interacts with all the kids, so bring your families down for that. We also have the car show, the pie bake-off, $3 tasters from Batavia Restaurants, the fun free kids area, and the always popular pie in the face. I will not be asking the Aldermen to do it again this year, I think I'm going to stick to the PTO and the principles, it seemed to work really well last year, but if you guys want to, just let me know. In a moment, I'm going to welcome up Abby Beck to talk about the Green Fair, but before I do that, I just wanted to, I passed around a couple flyers, just some quick reminders for you guys, there's also some on the table if anybody wants some. The House Walk is Sunday, September 25th, 11 to 4:00. We have some great houses, as well as featuring the Newton House this year, so make sure to just put that on your calendar, we're still looking for docents for that event, but tickets are on sale on our website. And then we also, on July 28th, which is a Thursday, we are going to be hosting a blood drive here in Batavia. All the blood that goes to Heartland Blood Center is distributed and used locally in northern Illinois and Indiana. So if you have a chance to sign up, you can go on our website or on the Heartland Blood Center website, there's flyers, we've got posters up as well, so pay attention to those. And finally, just as this weekend showed us, this community is amazing, and we have so much talent here, people at our events that have been playing music down at the farmer's market, I think it was Bagpipes this weekend, which was kind of goofy, but cool nonetheless, people at Cocktails in the Park doing artwork, you know, and we need all of those volunteers and all of those people who have amazing talents, amazing thoughts, and planning abilities to come join us. So give us a call at (630) 761-3528, or find us at downtownbatavia.com. You can sign up for our e-news, shoot us an email, follow us on Facebook to stay up to date with what's going on in downtown. So now, I will turn it over to Abby Beck, who is our Batavia Farmer's Market Manager, as well as the Chair of Green Fair on the Fox, and she's going to talk about that with you.
Thank you, Jamie, and good evening. A quick update, too, on Walk Your City, which I presented a couple of weeks ago, the 23 first batch of signs are up, and we're seeing a lot of scans, the QR codes are getting scanned. I think Pokemon has really helped us in this regard, so it could not have been timed any better. So thank you for your support, thank you so much to the city and to Main Street for helping get that project off the ground. I wanted to remind you, too, about the Change One campaign. Change One is the theme for the Green Fair on the Fox this August 13th, downtown Batavia. We're motivating and inspiring everyone to change one thing about their daily lives to be a little bit greener, in hopes that, you know, when people think, oh, what's that one change going to really impact, but one change multiplied by a whole city full of people actually has a really profound impact on the environment. So we want everyone to make those small changes that they think won't make a difference. And those small changes that you are making, we want to promote you and celebrate those changes. So we've been asking people to write their small change, or one change, on this poster here, and we've been taking pictures, we've got Aldermen Brown and Atech so far, and a number of other city employees, so if you see me on the street with a dry erase marker, please don't run away from me, I would love to get more and more of your pictures posted over the next coming weeks in anticipation of the Green Fair, which again is August 13th. We have 55 vendors lined up, that'll be stationed both in here and out on the lawn, a great lineup there. We've got a bicycle swap hosted by the Batavia Bicycle Commission, there's a clothing swap with the proceeds going to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Closed Closet, the Chicago Herpetological Society, if you were here last year, a ton of amphibians and reptiles and more for you to cuddle up with. So it's going to be a really great fair, and we've been having a lot of fun planning it, so hopefully we will see you down there on August 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you and the Environmental Commission are doing. It's a great shot in the arm for Batavia to understand all the movement and appreciate all your good work, so thank you very much. Okay, next one is going to be a swearing-in of Officer Lawrence Hill, but I'm going to ask Chief Shire if he would do the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to bring forth one of our newest officers, for you to meet him, but also for the mayor to swear him in, so I'd like to call Officer Larry Hill forward. While Larry's walking up, Larry was born in Evergreen Park, currently lives in Chicago. Larry came to us from Chicago PD, where he served 10 years, 10, a little bit more than 10 years on the Chicago Police Department, and he saw the light and decided to come to a real police department. So he joined, he joined the Batavia Police Department at the end of June, and I'm sure he's going to have a long and illustrious career with us, and we're very, very happy to have him. Mayor?
Lawrence F. Hill.
I, Lawrence F. Hill.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer.
On June 27th, 2016.
On June 27th, 2016.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
I'd just like to introduce my family that's here to support me, my wife, Corinne, and my son, Declan, and my mother and daughter-in-law, David, and my brothers and sisters, and my people. I look forward to serving for you. Thank you very much.
I might add, it might be of interest to the council, since Larry comes to us as a certified police officer, there's no need to go back to the police academy, so he's currently in field training, and I'm sure he'll go through an expedited version of the field training here, but I'm very, very happy to have Larry, and congratulations, Larry.
The next item is 10, and that's a presentation of a lifesaving award to five Batavia police officers by the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, and we have a past chairman of that group right here.
Past president of the Association, correct, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call forward Officer Howell and Officer Skorup, and Officer Potoff, and Watch Commander Blowers, if you'd come forward. Unfortunately, Officer Erica Stover, something came up at the last minute and couldn't be here, but you guys should just stand behind me here. And I'm going to call forward the fourth Vice President of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, Chief Jim Black of Crystal Lake Police Department, who happens to be a Batavia resident, he's going to present the award. And just to give you a little foundation, or a little background, I should say, and I'm going to have Chief Black actually describe, you know, why the officers are receiving the award, but back beginning of, beginning of the year, the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, among other awards, solicits nominations for their lifesaving award, and I nominated these five officers for a lifesaving award, and you'll hear for a minute, hear in a minute why I thought they were very, very deserving. I'm happy to report that the Awards Committee of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police did select them, and I'm so pleased, because I do think they deserve statewide honor. So, and at the April conference, they were officially announced, and the award is actually going to be presented here in front of you tonight by Chief Black, so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Black.
Thanks, Chief Shire. I'm going to see if I can do this without my glasses. First, I wanted to thank the council for allowing me to be here tonight and interrupt your council meeting. As Chief Shire said, I am a resident of Batavia, so it's honor, it's an honor for me to be here tonight as well in presenting the officers with their awards. Additionally, you know, it's a tough time in law enforcement right now, and not to minimize the efforts and the lives that were lost in Dallas and Baton Rouge, but I think it's fitting that we're making this presentation tonight to these officers, because I think it's important that the Batavia residents know the type of quality and outstanding police officers that they have on their police department. With that being said, I'd like to read Chief Shire's nomination to the Illinois Chiefs' Awards Board. On December 14th, 2015, at approximately 23:50 hours, Batavia police officers were dispatched to the 300 block of Walnut Street for a report of a respondent and suicidal subject. Sergeant Blowers, along with Officers Howell and Officer Stover, responded to the scene. Once on the scene, Officer Howell met with the subject and immediately noticed a long rifle in the bedroom and notified Sergeant Blowers. Officer Howell led the subject to a separate area of the apartment, of the area of the apartment away from the firearm. Officer Howell then spoke with the subject in question, and using excellent communication skills, was able to develop a good rapport with him. Through investigation, it was determined that at the time that the subject had not made any suicidal statements, and was merely depressed about a relationship ending. He denied having any suicidal thoughts. The firearm was also determined to be a BB gun, and was checked clear with the subject's permission. He was checked out by the medics on the scene and released without transport per his request. After clearing, Officer Howell took the extra step of contacting the subject's parents to inform them of the outcome of the response, and requested that they follow up with their son, and to contact the Batavia police if they believed he was in danger of harming himself in the future. Approximately 45 minutes after clearing the initial call, TRICOM notified officers that the subject's parents were calling to report that he was now expressing specific suicidal ideations to them. Officers were advised that the subject shared with them a plan to commit suicide by cop by forcing officers to shoot him after he pulled out a knife. Sergeant Blowers, along with Officer Stover, Howell, Potoff, and Skorup responded to the residents, taking up tactical positions upon arrival. Contact with the subject was attempted with negative results, and no movement could be seen inside his first-floor apartment. Officer Skorup checked the parking lot and surrounding streets for signs of the subject's vehicle, having negative results. Officer Howell requested a local dispatch to search for the vehicle, and also requested to have an Aurora PD squad respond to the subject's ex-girlfriend's resident, who happened to be the original caller, to check on her well-being. Sergeant Blowers began formulating a tactical entry into the residence with Officer Potoff while Officer Stover maintained a perimeter. Almost immediately after making these requests, TRICOM notified officers that the subject was driving his vehicle and was not in his apartment. Officer Howell then established telephone contact with the subject's father, who expressed concern for the safety of his son, as well as for the officers, due to his son's irrational state and intent to commit suicide by cop. He informed Officer Howell that he believed his son had a knife with him, and that he was back en route to his residence to confront the officers. Sergeant Blowers spoke with Sergeant Cabray of the Geneva Police Department, and requested a Geneva officer equipped with a taser, and Officer Lance Polly from Geneva Police Department responded to the scene. At about the same time, officers observed a black sedan traveling northbound on Batavia Avenue, and Officer Skorup advised that the vehicle appeared to be the Ford Focus and was turning into the apartment complex. Officer Howell ran from the apartment unit to the parking lot area to keep constant surveillance on the vehicle. Officer Howell confirmed the vehicle registration as belonging to the respondent's subject, and Officer Skorup and Potoff moved to Howell's location to back him up, all taking tactical positions and illuminating the interior of the car, which was now parked in the southeast end of the parking lot. Officer Howell immediately established telephonic contact with the subject and proceeded to speak with him in an attempt to gain compliance. Sergeant Blowers and Officer Stover arrived on scene at that time and deployed a tactical shield. Officer Potoff met with Officer Polly and briefed him on the situation. Officer Howell utilized strong communication skills and the rapport he had previously developed with the subject, and after almost 20 minutes, was able to convince him to exit the vehicle with his hands up. Officer Skorup led the approach towards the subject utilizing the tactical shield, and he was taken into custody without incident. The subject was searched by Officer Howell and was found to indeed be in possession of a folding knife in his jacket pocket. Once the scene was secure, medics were called and the respondent's subject was transported to the hospital, accompanied by Officers Howell and Potoff. Once there, the officers relayed pertinent information to hospital staff that ultimately resulted in the subject being admitted of a much-needed inpatient psychiatric evaluation. Because of the quick decisive actions of these officers, a serious and possibly deadly situation was resolved peacefully and without incident. So on behalf of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, I have a lifesaving award that I would like to present to Sergeant Eric Blowers, Officer Erica Stover, Officer Chris Potoff, Officer Justin Howell, and Officer Mark Skorup. These awards read as follows: For exceptional effort and commitment demonstrated December 14th, 2015, which could have tragically ended in a loss of life, an individual with serious psychological issues and suicidal ideation wanted to force the hands of the Batavia police officers, resulting in a suicide by cop scenario. Only with restraint, rapport, and good police work was this potential tragedy avoided. You and the other officers responded with quick and decisive actions. A serious and possibly deadly situation was resolved peacefully and without incident. So on behalf of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, I have a lifesaving award that I would like to present to Sergeant Eric Blowers, Officer Erica Stover, Officer Chris Potoff, Officer Justin Howell, and Officer Mark Skorup. These awards read as follows: For exceptional effort and commitment demonstrated December 14th, 2015, which could have tragically ended in a loss of life, an individual with serious psychological issues and suicidal ideation wanted to force the hands of the Batavia police officers, resulting in a suicide by cop scenario. Only with restraint, rapport, and good police work was this potential tragedy avoided. You and the other officers responded with quick and decisive actions. A serious and possibly deadly situation was resolved peacefully and without incident. You were clearly instrumental in lifesaving efforts that day. You are the personification of professionalism and courage, and are truly deserving of this prestigious recognition for your significant contribution to law enforcement and public safety in Illinois. Congratulations.
Dyke if he would come up and give us the backgrounds on the recognition of the retirement of Battalion Chief Jamie White, after 36 years of service to the department, and then we're going to have the oath of office to newly-appointed Battalion Chief John Lucas and newly-appointed Lieutenant Stephen Schmidt.
Good evening. If Jamie White could come up, please? Jamie has been a long member of our department. He started in 1980 as a paid-on call, and he was hired full-time in 1992, promoted to Lieutenant in 2006, and promoted to Battalion Chief in 2012. He has been here a total of 36 years, and he's always been a very integral, knowledgeable, very valuable member of our department, and he's also a friend to almost, to everybody on the fire department and to many within the city. So on behalf of the Batavia Fire Department, I would like to thank you for all the years of service that you've given to the city.
Okay, when you've worked for the city of Batavia for 36 years, and if you've been the mayor for 36 years like I have, there's going to be some times when there's going to be cross stories about an employee. And I've already told one in another affair, but I've, just one tonight I'd like to share was, is that I spend a certain amount of time during the year, every year, up at the Homestead, and there's a lot of different folks up there, they're all nice people. But I had, one time, a couple of years ago, I had one of the ladies tell me that she was going through some health difficulties, and so there had been a number of times when she had found it necessary to dial 911 and ask for the support of the Batavia Fire Department, and that one of the things she liked was when she had a health problem, and Batavia responded, and Chief White came along, because he just had a great bedside manner. So I just share that. willing to come at any time, day or night, to help us out when we need it just. So, on behalf of the people of Batavia again, thank you.
I'm gonna try to say a few words, but it's heavy. It's 36 years, it doesn't seem like it's been that long. I just wanna thank the city and the department for all the opportunities that I've been given. It's been a really good run, and I've met some really outstanding people at the department and throughout the city that definitely made my job a lot easier. So thank you to all them, and then I would be remiss if I didn't thank my family for putting up with me, for not being there for whatever. I get to be there now, so thank you.
And with Jamie leaving, we now have two promotions within the fire department, one for Battalion Chief to replace him, and then one for Lieutenant to replace the lieutenant that's going to be the Battalion Chief. So if I could call John Lucas and Stephen Schmidt up, please. John Lucas, Lieutenant Lucas, is going to be a Battalion Chief. He started full-time in the fire department in 2006 as a firefighter and paramedic. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2013, and he serves as a fire officer, too, a safety officer on our department, and also a fire service instructor. That there is John Lucas. And then Stephen Schmidt, he started in the fire department in 2003. Prior to that, he was in the U.S. Marine Corps from 1985 to 1989. He started as a firefighter/paramedic. He is a fire officer one of arson investigator, and he's also in charge of our juvenile fire center program. So, congratulations to both of you, and it's time to swear in.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
Hi, John Lucas.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of Battalion Chief with the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
DeSalleway Square.
DeSalleway Square.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that will faithfully discharge the duties.
That will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Battalion Chief.
Of the position of Battalion Chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Hi, Stephen Schmidt.
Hi, Stephen Schmidt.
Having been appointed to the position of Lieutenant with the Batavia Fire Department in the city of Batavia, in the counties of Kane and DuPage, DeSalleway Square, that will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Lieutenant with the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
It is always customary to have somebody from their family or somebody that they want
Now we're gonna jump over to the Public Works Department, and I would like to recognize
pin on their badge for the first time.
John Dillon for 37 years of service with the City of Batavia Water Department, Gary
So if they could both come up here. Battalion Chief Lucas has his family to pin on his badge, and Lieutenant Schmidt has
Holm, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
his wife to pin on his badge.
I promised John I would keep my comments brief tonight, but with almost 38 years of service, it's kinda hard to condense it all into just new sentences. It'd be easy to point to all of the accomplishments he's had, like the water treatment plant and the water towers and the crosstown water main, and those are all great infrastructure that will serve this community for generations. But I think just as equally important, if not more important, is John's involvement in local charities with the local churches, and just to kinda show his dedication to the community and to the utilities, over the last couple of years, John has spent countless hours on his own time, sitting in the Batavia Library, going through microfiche, researching all the history, so that the history of the water and sewer utilities isn't lost, and that it's kept them forever for everyone. So, John's gonna be really missed. I'll tell you, as a supervisor, it's just so nice to know that I can have a project and not even have to worry about it. And that's gonna be missed. So, John, thank you very much.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, I really wanna say something very special about this guy, because he really has risen to the occasion and done a lot of stuff for this community of Batavia that's gone kind of unnoticed. And one of the true things he did was, is that when he elevated himself into the Batavia Water Department, almost right out of high school, I think it was, they're pretty close, we were still kind of in the back ages as far as a public utility, and there used to be a joke in the city of Batavia that when we built the utility systems, there were people that built them 100 years ago that buried everything in the ground and didn't tell anybody where anything was, because that was their job security. And so, there was a lot of places that we didn't have any record of where pipe was buried or whatever, and much less how big the pipe was, or where it went, it was a whole bunch of interesting things. And during John's career with us, he's been the man of magic that's gone out and found all this pipe, and certainly upgraded this system, so that today, I am proud to say that I leave the city of Batavia as one of the most modern and update and safest water systems in the northern section of Illinois. And a lot of that goes to John's credit, because he really has risen to the occasion, and he's been a man with hands-on, and has really taken this department into a very professional standard. And then he oversaw the construction of the whole water system when we had to remove radium, and then we had to build the West Side Water Tower, and then we had to build a big line through town, uprooted a bunch of streets, and all kinds of good stuff, underneath the Fox River with it, and the whole bit. And everything seemed to flow just seamlessly under John's direction and leadership. So John, like Gary Holm, I am very, very sorry to see you leave in your position, but hopefully we've talked you into helping us out in a few special circumstances here, and you're certainly somebody who will always be welcome to be part of the city of Batavia's family, because you really have risen to the occasion. So like Jamie, tonight I have a City of Batavia tree sign for John Dillon Drive. Now, again, we don't have any streets to name right now, but we're gonna add your name to the list, so that hopefully the day will come when we'll have your name out there for perpetuity, and everybody can see your name and understand the really great job that you've done over the years. So, on behalf of the people of Batavia, we thank you for a job well done.
Well, thank you all very much. Actually, I have something I wanna read tonight. First of all, congratulations to all the police and firefighters who are here tonight. It's an honor for me to be recognized on the same evening as these individuals. I can tell you during my long career with the city of Batavia that each of the departments has mutual respect for one another, and is always willing to lend a hand and offer support whenever needed. I wanna personally congratulate one of my best friends, Jamie White, on his recent retirement. He beat me by a couple of weeks, but Jamie and I have been friends since high school, and we were actually former roommates when we both served together as paid-on-call firemen back in the early 1980s. We had a lot of fun. As I had, as had been mentioned, I've decided to retire from the city effective July 29th. This was not an easy decision for me, but I felt that now was the right time for me to move on to the next stage of my life. I wanna take time to enjoy my family and do some traveling while continuing with my passion for volunteering in our community. I hope also to stay involved within the waterworks industry, both regionally and at the state level on a variety of committees. These last 36-plus years have been a wonderful experience for me and my wife Marcy. I wanna thank the citizens of Batavia, for whom I've always had the utmost respect, the elected officials for all of your dedication and ongoing support, the city's department heads and supervisory staff for your support and guidance, thank you, and especially my coworkers who've been so reliable and dedicated during the good times and during the crisis moments that we've had. The men and women at Batavia Public Works today, and those that mentored me as a young man, have always been truly committed to working for the betterment of our community. Throughout my career, I've often bragged to my constituents about the excellent crew I've had, the good fortune to work with, and I truly appreciate everything they've done to make my job so much easier and enjoyable. I also wanna thank my family for their support, and especially my wife Marcy, who's here tonight, who has been a huge supporter and sounding board for me during the past 30 years. The opportunities that have been provided to me by the city of Batavia have led to a rewarding and fulfilling career, and in hindsight, I don't think I could have chosen a better profession or a community to work for. I'm looking forward to continuing my employment with the city on a part-time basis, as we work together to continue making improvements at the Government Center, and in any other way I can be of assistance to the community. And I thank you all.
And item 15 is our final presentation, is the Innovation Center for the Fox Valley. Bretta McKenna?
Okay, Bill, I pressed B. It's for Bill, B is for Bill. Mayor, Council, I'm glad to be back, and some people have been wondering where I've been for the last couple of years, so I hope tonight will catch you up a little bit with what I've been working on. I've been at the Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy, back there for three years now, and the big project that I've been working on is IN2, which is the innovation hub for the Fox Valley. So tonight is an information session, so you can get caught up with what's coming, and it's gonna be on the Aurora campus, just 15 minutes from here. If you aren't aware, IMSA, Illinois Math and Science Academy, was established in 1985 by the Illinois General Assembly. We opened in 1986, we'll be celebrating 30 years next year. We have two legislative charges. The first is to provide an advanced academic and residential program for students, exceptional talent in math and science, and the second is to serve as a catalyst to stimulate teaching and learning specifically for teachers, not just at IMSA but around the state. So we have a mandate by the state legislature to fulfill these two missions. So IN2, it's kind of a fun name, and it came about by a gift two and a half years ago by one of our alums, Steve Chen, who's a co-founder of YouTube. He gave us $1 million, and then challenged me to raise the other $1 million, which is complete, and so we're under construction, we'll be opening in the fall. So, this center, the gift that Steve gave us was very specific. It said, "This gift is not just for IMSA, it is for IMSA to collaborate with the community." And that's why I'm here, is to spread the word about what we're doing, and that IMSA is opening our doors, and we want the city of Batavia, Batavia entrepreneurs and nonprofits to come in and collaborate with us. So, IN2 is the name, it's very, very highly conceptual, but it plays upon both the idea of innovation and inquiry, the I-N in both of those. The 2 I like, it has three different strands, and it represents the sophomore, junior, and senior year experience at IMSA. But I'm gonna show you quickly, a 3D walkthrough, for those of you who like that. There is no sound, I'm told, but that's okay, I'll narrate. I don't remember the exact words, but the new Innovation Center will be 6,400 square feet. It's located right by the IMSA's front door, so if you've ever walked up, it's just to the left, it'll be right there as you check in. I already talked about that part. Now, when we get to the walkthrough, so this is the bird's-eye view of the hub, and we'll have a large collaboration space, an entrepreneur and residence office, a learning laboratory, makerspace, small conference rooms where we'll be featuring area emerging technology, a space where people can come in and try technology before they buy it, which I think is a great thing. So you'll be able to come in the front door, and you'll be greeted by an idea barista at our idea bar. We'll be looking for community volunteers, I've already talked with Roger Breis, he's come out and actually been prototyping what that experience will look like. If you know Roger, you know he'll like that. So you'll go in there, there's a media wall, there's a lot of whiteboard walls and places to collaborate, that's the entrepreneur and residence office, so if you wanna come in and mentor students or anyone in the IN2 network, people can sign up to actually be mentored by you. It's our learning laboratory, which will hold coding classes for the community, plus some, maybe some new IMSA classes. A 500-square-foot makerspace will feature clean technology such as 3D printers, additive and subtractive manufacturing, and electronics like Arduinos and Raspberry Pis. This week, we're holding a maker camp for 7th and 8th graders, so if I'm a little ragged, that's why. The back area is a maker lounge that has actually three telephone booths, and that particular conference space is for emerging technology, where we're gonna have a virtual reality cave, and feature Vive and some student projects that are working on virtual reality. Then we'll have a TED Talk stage, which will seat 60, and the seats will actually stack up and go right into the wall, and there are two launchpads, you see one of them open.
and learning specifically for teachers, not just at IMSA, but around the state. So we have a mandate by the state legislature to fulfill these two missions. So IN2, it's kind of a fun name, and it came about by a gift two and a half years ago by one of our alums, Steve Chen, who's a co-founder of YouTube. He gave us $1 million, and then challenged me to raise the other $1 million, which is complete, and so we're under construction, we'll be opening in the fall. So this center, the gift that Steve gave us was very specific. It said, "This gift is not just for IMSA, it is for IMSA to collaborate with the community." And that's why I'm here, is to spread the word about what we're doing, and that IMSA is opening our doors, and we want the City of Batavia, Batavia entrepreneurs, and nonprofits to come in and collaborate with us. So, IN2 is the name, it's very, very highly conceptual, but it plays upon both the idea of innovation and inquiry, the I-N in both of those. The 2 I like, it has three different strands, and it represents the sophomore, junior, and senior year experience at IMSA. But I'm going to show you quickly, a 3D walkthrough, for those of you who like that. There is no sound, I'm told, but that's okay, I'll narrate. I don't remember the exact words, but the new Innovation Center will be 6,400 square feet. It's located right by the IMSA's front door, so if you've ever walked up, it's just to the left, it'll be right there as you check in. I already talked about that part. Now, when we get to the walkthrough, so this is the bird's-eye view of the hub, and we'll have a large collaboration space, an entrepreneur and residence office, a learning laboratory, maker space, small conference rooms, where we'll be featuring area emerging technology, a space where people can come in and try technology before they buy it, which I think is a great thing. So you'll be able to come in the front door, and you'll be greeted by an idea barista at our idea bar. We'll be looking for community volunteers, I've already talked with Roger Brish, he's come out and actually been prototyping what that experience will look like. If you know Roger, you know he'll like that. So you'll go in there, there's a media wall, there's a lot of whiteboard walls and places to collaborate, that's the entrepreneur and residence office, so if you want to come in and mentor students or anyone in the IN2 network, people can sign up to actually be mentored by you. It's our learning laboratory, which will hold coding classes for the community, plus some, maybe some new IMSA classes. A 500-square-foot maker space will feature clean technology, such as 3D printers, additive and subtractive manufacturing, and electronics like Arduinos and Raspberry Pis. This week, we're holding a maker camp for 7th and 8th graders, so if I'm a little ragged, that's why. The back area is a maker lounge that has actually three telephone booths, and that particular conference space is for emerging technology, where we're going to have a virtual reality cave, and feature Vive and some student projects that are working on virtuality. Then we'll have a TED Talk stage, which will seat 60, and the seats will actually stack up and go right into the wall, and there are two launchpads, you see one of them open. We have just selected one of the recipients that will be in that space for an IMSA project. The other one, we are down to two finalists, we're selecting a community educational technology startup, who will be able to use the space at no cost for one year, be able to have free interns and free use of the space to grow an Illinois technology company. So that's just an overview of IN2. I wanted you to see that, because it's very impressive to see the space. I gave hard hat tours to our alums just this weekend, and quite a few came through. Now, let's see if I can get out of this and get back to the presentation. There we go. All right, for those who are interested, if you're wondering about Illinois' innovation ecosystem, this is a snapshot. You're looking, "Wow, I'm thinking, where does this fit in?" IN2 is not yet up there, because we're not open, but we will be collaborating with Illinois Higher Education. So if you look on there, you're going to see everything from University of Illinois to IIT, Northwestern, and their innovation spaces. IMSA sponsors the IMSA Room at 1871, we're very well-connected to that entrepreneurial ecosystem, Argon Fermilab, all of the large federal labs, as well as incubator spaces. Our interns even intern at places like 25 North in downtown Geneva, they get shipped off around Chicagoland on Wednesdays or I-days, when they don't have regular class. So you ask, "Where did this idea came from?" Well, it came from Steve Chen, but then it was up to me to do the homework, to figure out what this was going to look like. And because I do like to collaborate, and I like to find out what other spaces look like, I took 15 students to Silicon Valley two years ago, where we visited Twitter, Dropbox, Google, Avos, the Exploratorium, Facebook, and others, as well as small coworking spaces to find out what was new in innovation spaces. Then I went over to the East Coast to visit Boston and the Harvard Innovation Lab, as well as the MIT Media Lab, Greentown Labs, and the Artist Asylum, just to get an idea of what was in nonprofit spaces, for-profit spaces, and higher education. Locally, we visited to the Caterpillar's Visitor Center in Peoria, we went to the Woodward Aerospace in Rockford, the University of Illinois, Illinois Institute of Technology, and others. And we went to digital manufacturing as well, in Goose Island, and Northwestern. Locally, we spoke with the Aurora Public Library as they were building out their maker space, and tried to help advise them in that process. And we went up to the Business Incubator at Barrington High School, and I know that their curriculum is at Batavia High School as well. I'm not going to go through all these, I'll spare you that, but the things that are in blue are programs that currently exist, that I've been launching in my innovation space that I call IN1. It's a prototype of IN2. The ones in green are programs that are coming soon, which include things like a teen STEM Cafe series, where we're collaborating with six area high school leaders, we have a board, and we'll be inviting those students to come in for a series on teen topics. Our first program will actually be on Sunday, September 18th, the topic is machine learning, and our sponsor is Caterpillar. So our four pillars really of IN2 are going to be teaching and learning, entrepreneurship education, maker education, and really filling out the STEM talent pipeline, reaching down to middle school kids, bringing them up to high school, and then connecting them with higher education and mentors in the community. Funding, I talked to you, we've really been, we're going to open the doors totally, buy donations, buy gifts, we're done fundraising with that, so I'm not here to ask for money. That's a surprise to some of you, I'm sure. We are going to have memberships, we are kicking off sponsorships next month, we will have some programs that will be at no cost, some will have fees, and I am hiring staff, so I actually am hiring four people. I'm in the process of doing that now, because we're, they will not be paid by the state of Illinois, which is probably a good thing. So I started to fill out this slide, and I actually had bullet points, and I took them off, because I thought I might ask you, "Why do you think that innovation is important to Batavia and the Fox Valley?" Any ideas? And it was, it's kind of a deadly thing to kind of ask you what you think, but why would we need an innovation center? Why do we innovate? Anybody have ideas? Because if you don't, I've got an answer, but I'd rather hear from you.
Promote job growth.
Promote job growth.
We've got a highly talented youth group within our community, with, I think, vibrant ideas of things that they could promote, and so, I mean, there's a good talent pool to tap into here, not only here, but throughout the valley.
Absolutely. This space is not just for IMSA students, it's for those students that sometimes can't find a mentor in their own school that have an idea. It's for the intrapreneurs within companies, who have ideas that the company doesn't know what to do with. If we don't innovate, we're not changing. If we're not changing, we're standing still, and if we're standing still, we're falling behind, and if we fall behind, we'll go out of business. In the United States, in Illinois, in Batavia and the Fox Valley cannot afford to do that, and that's what this space is all about. So why should the City of Batavia be involved? What's the value proposition? Well, I'm going to encourage you, when there's memberships, yes, there is an ask, when we open, for you to join as a member involving key outreach staff to become involved, and to invite Batavia entrepreneurs and intrapreneurs to come as your guests, to connect the City of Energy with the IMSA Energy Center and our related student, student inquiry and research work, to attend IN2 events, and to keep up with the latest trends of technology, and to join IN2 problem teams, where we can work on problems in the Fox Valley together, regardless of boundaries of where we live. Also, to connect Batavia with Fox Valley, Chicago, Illinois, and national innovators and entrepreneurs. That's all I've got, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So where does the future funding come from, for encouraging their projects and helping them?
Right. So future funding, I'm actually in the process of raising seed funding, $250,000, which I'm halfway through, and that will provide kind of an on-ramp until I have the revenue. So memberships, sponsorships, partnerships, program fees, so it cannot be free, because I can't take, I can't just open the doors for free, we can't, but we will have a very minimal membership fee for people to come in. It's free to IMSA students and faculty and staff, that's our core, but to come in and collaborate with us, it'll be similar to a chamber-type membership, it will not be as expensive as a coworking space. I don't want businesses to come in and work there full-time. I want them to come in with ideas, to join problem teams. So you say, "What are we going to do about the Fox River? What are we going to do about regional tourism? What are we going to do about these things?" And get people to actually break down the barriers of where you live, and work on regional problems together.
So it's limited to that? Like if someone has an idea that is really cool, is it their idea, and you'll help them? Do you have any ownership rights?
We do have some ownership rights, we have, we're changing our IP policy to include external collaborators right now, it includes IMSA. But yes, when you come into the space, if you're an idea barista, or you're just mentoring somebody, you're really giving away whatever your advice and counsel is. If you have a problem team that moves on and crosses over to be a how team, there will be co-collaboration and ownership of ideas, so there will be some documentation of that, so that you will own those ideas moving forward together, the solution to the problem. Until there's a solution, it's just all pretty much open. Any other questions?
Other questions? Well, we thank you for coming down and for sharing this great idea with us, and we wish you the very best as you move forward with this.
All right, thank you, and we'll be open sometime after Labor Day, and I will be in contact with your new city administrator. And I do want to say thank you to Bill McGrath, and, well, all the people that left, that were honored, because it was great to be here tonight to witness that. And I want to thank Bill personally for his years of service. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. All right, it's item 16, which is the Administrator's Report, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. Give you an update on brush pickup program. This week, July 18th, is the brush pickup for the east side. You were supposed to have tried to have your, you were supposed to have your brush at the curb this morning. If your driveway, if your block hasn't been picked up yet, you could try to put your stuff out there very rapidly, but our contractor goes through down very quickly. After that, the next pickup will be on the east side, August 8th, and followed by the week of September 12th, and that's the east side. The west side, after this week, you'll have to wait till the week of August 15th and the week of September 19th. I wanted to report on, first of all, the Baptist Church project, which, as many of you know now, is actually called the One North Washington Project. We had a Committee of the Whole meeting last week, which I thought was a very good meeting, there were a lot of questions have been asked since. We tried to respond to everything that we can, we've seen a lot of dialogue on Facebook, and have tried to respond to inquiries there. We're going to have another more detailed rundown of the finances tomorrow evening's Committee of the Whole, so if anybody is interested from the public, please come down. If you can't make it, please feel free to call at City Hall and ask for community development or economic development, I think you can get any and all your questions answered that you may have. The Plan Commission will have its first discussion about the project Wednesday night. If you have questions about the actual zoning and the building itself and how it might work, you can also come that evening, or get questions to our community development staff, which kind of staffs the Plan Commission meetings, and get them, get those questions to them, so we can make sure we address them as part of the presentation. We have Thursday mornings, we have a development meeting here, where we have developers come and talk with staff representatives of all our departments. Dave Patzelt, who is the developers representative, attended that meeting last Thursday, and they've begun looking at the real details, like garbage, security in the parking deck, some discussions on the possibility of doing some kind of, something in memoriam of the Baptist church that is currently there, they may even use some of the materials from the existing church to build part of this building. The staff will be setting up a special meeting with the owners and operators, who are directly and indirectly impacted, such as the owners and operators of the River Edge, Katrina's, Wendy's Wilson, Dr. Fisher, the Attorney's Office, El Taco Grande, and actually everybody on River Street, so we can identify issues and reassure them about how our pledge to maintain life as unusual during construction. The staff did, as I had talked to you a few weeks ago, they did go through the church to identify possible auction items, they're going to be meeting with the church to talk about that, and see how we get some of those items into the community. Chris Ason, our economic development consultant, met with the Main Street Board last week, and received support for the project, we'll be partnering with them, very important to work with them on handbook, or to stay in really close touch with the businesses in that area while the project goes on. The project is going to take at least a year to build, and so our entire property there, including the Baptist church and all the parking, will be unavailable, so we're currently looking at a temporary parking situation, we'll lose all of our 126 spaces, roughly 100 when you figure the new spaces that we put up in the art stop last year. So we are engaged in discussions on land acquisition, and I think we'll be finishing up at least one of them very soon. Peggy's working on bond issuance timing, we've got some questions for bond council. It's a very complex kind of building, because of the integration of the parking deck along with an apartment building, so we're going to be talking with Main Street again about the farmer's market, because that'll be moved for next year, and we'll be, as I said before, we'll be really close partners with Main Street over the next couple of years. On the Blue Goose front, our consultant from Ellers met with Batavia Enterprises last Wednesday, and is currently reviewing the documents that was given to her, to make, to see if she has everything that she needs, and hopefully, if so, we'll be getting an analysis and a recommendation within two weeks, if those are complete. There is a set of plans that she has been given to review, we've been told that they will have their construction costs in two weeks, and they hope to publicly file the plans and their costs around that time. I know the, I think the community may be interested to know that Laura and I are continuing to work in transition, and there are some things that she's already been a part of, she's been part of some work on improving the group health insurance program for the city, it looks like there can be some real savings there, so that's very much appreciated. She's continuing to have meetings with department heads on particular items, she'll be going with Gary Holm to New York next week, because we're doing some, NMPA is doing some refinancing of the bonds that relate to the Prairie State project, so she'll be going there, because there needs to be meetings with the rating agencies, which is very important, we hope to be saving some considerable monies if that refinancing goes through, and then she's also registered for the Wisconsin Public Utility Institute Energy Utility Basics course in September. So that's a, that will be, she'll be immersed in the world of electricity, and I think that'll be very good, and I know at the same time, she's been meeting with individual aldermen, and making some other plans. So I think that's really all I have for this evening, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions, Bill? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Just a couple of meetings to announce, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, we've got the Committee of the Whole meeting, starts at 7:30. The only item that Community Development has is the Hart Road Intergovernmental Agreement for annexation and de-annexation, and then the Plan Commission is meeting July 20th, which is Wednesday, at 7:30. On their agenda, as Bill mentioned, is the One Washington Place Development Concept Plan. Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet on July 25th at 5:30, and this will be the second time that the developer and the city has been in presenting the One Washington Place Development Concept Plan, and the city for the demolition permit. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Government Services, Alderman Aitcher?
Yes, right now, the only government service issues will be tomorrow night at the COW meeting, and we'll discuss One Washington Place Draft Redevelopment Agreement, and the Inducement Resolution for One Washington Place, a strategic planning and a leadership retreat, and possibly have a discussion on raising the cigarette purchase age. That's it.
City Services, Alderman Luff?
Thank you, Your Honor. City Services will have a continued discussion on implementing contractor registration and surplus police vehicles on July 26th.
Public Utilities, Alderman Ryan?
We don't have anything, thank you, Your Honor, but we have nothing in July, but it has, we're looking for some dates, possibly in August, to discuss the contract for the sanitary sewer pipelining, and contracts for the east side sanitary sewer engineering.
Do we have other items of business from members of the City Council? Alderman Brown?
I just want to comment, on Saturday, I don't know if any of the other aldermen had an opportunity to go out to the water treatment plant out on Fabian Parkway, I did go out there for the 10 o'clock tour, and that the Environmental Commission put on, along with the Water Department, and it was very informative, and it was just, it was real nice to see the Environmental Commission take the lead on that, and what the Water Department did to work with them, to inform our community of the hows and the whys of what we do with our water utility, so it was very good to go.
Thank you for that. Alderman, Environment?
Yes, I was, well, we're looking at the calendar for August, and under Public Utilities, I was wondering if it might be possible for us to schedule sometime in August, a presentation, with or without the attorneys from General and Block regarding Prairie State. I would like to hear an update on where things stand with that review, and related details, so while we have August open for Public Utilities, I'd like to see if we can get commitment to scheduling a report on that item.
Okay, thank you. Think we should be able to do that?
I hope so, thank you.
Anybody else on the council, anything else? Under the Mayor's Report, I just wanted to share with you, I had an experience last week, on Thursday, I was asked to come into DePaul University at Jackson and State, and participate in a panel discussion they had in there with regional leaders. We had the Metropolitan Planning Council, and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, several of those groups of which I have some relationship with, but they had a, invited a bunch of builders and developers from the Chicagoland region to come in, and specifically, I was asked to come in and region to come in, and specifically, I was asked to come in and talk for just a few minutes about Batavia as it applied to, as I think I've mentioned to you, the region has started to notice all this renovation we've got going and all this older housing stock. And it's a point of great interest to these folks as to why this is all happening in Batavia, and what is our secret out here to what we're doing? And, you know, I said, "Well, you know, probably if there's secrets, one of them is, is that much of the older housing stock that surrounds the downtown was built probably by good craftsmen, many of them of Scandinavian descent 100 years ago, and they built a house that lasted." So when it comes time to buy this house that's now 100 years of age, you can still turn it around and save it and bring in new features to it, and the house is still pretty sound and able. But certainly that those houses are at a real estate price point that makes it very popular for people to buy, renovate them, and then either resell them or move into them themselves. But I indicated to them, and I really found out this to be true after this past weekend, as to, they said, "Well, you know, what do you think is the real secret here?" And I said, "Well, if you're to ask me what's really selling Batavia, it's probably the perception of the real estate market as to the quality of the school system." And if you start asking people, "Why are you moving in here?", many of them are telling you, "I am moving in here for the Batavia school system." So this past weekend, including the Chamber of Commerce party in the park, and then there was another situation I was invited to on southeast side of town on Saturday night, where I found myself being repeatedly introduced to all the new residents that were just moving in. This is down on South Van Buren Street. And I think I met three or four different families of people that have just moved to Batavia in the last three or four weeks. And, you know, I'm asking them, "Why did you move in here?" And the answer was the same with every one of them. "We wanted to get into the school system." They were just down the street and around the corner to J.B. Nelson School. And today, I ran into some more folks, and I asked them, "Where, why did you move to Batavia?" And they said, "Well, we wanted to get into the school system." And so I'm amazed at the number of people that are moving in. The other interesting thing is, as I told the group in Chicago last Thursday, the other group of constituency that seems to be wanting to move in here are the parents of all these people who already are here, so they want to move into Batavia and find themselves near their children and their grandchildren. And the one common theme I hear from them is, many of them are kind of thinking they're in a downsizing stage in their life, and they want to move out of a bigger house into something smaller. And, you know, the repeated theme I'm hearing is, "Why can't you have a nice condo that's one or two bedrooms with a nice living room and a kitchen and interior parking that I can move into and maybe stay there six or eight months of the year, and then I can go to Florida or Arizona for four or five months and keep myself real happy here?" But, you know, Batavia doesn't have that much of that type of housing available. Well, I would suggest that certainly with One Washington Avenue, we potentially are going to be in a position to offer some of that type of housing variation to us. So there just seems to be some interesting things kind of swirling around us here as to why people are moving in here. But I got to tell you, this past weekend, I met a whole bunch of folks that are here for, just in the last couple of weeks, and they all can't wait to get themselves enrolled in the Batavia school system. So I'm still predicting, I don't know if it's going to happen this year or next year, but I think the school district's going to get slammed with an enrollment increase that is coming at them from all these old houses that used to be occupied by single folks or widows or widowers, and they've all gone to some other place, and suddenly, all these houses are being reoccupied by all these younger couples, because that is a real trend in this town right now, I will tell you. I'm very convinced of it, and I see it almost on a day-to-day basis of everybody wanting to get in here. So I just share that with you as an insight that you can share with your own constituents and whatever. The folks in Chicago are looking at it, several told me they're looking at it with great envy, that we have this going on and that they're able to get all these old houses so easily flipped and restored into, you know, reoccupiable shape, because that's a great challenge and a problem for a number of other communities in the region that don't have that same spark into their market that people are wanting to move into. So I come out of Chicago after these meetings thanking my lucky stars that I live in the town I do, because we do seem to have some things heading for us in the right direction. So I just share that as a comment as to how many of the other people outside of this town are looking at what's going on here and saying, "It's, there's some positive things happening there." So we'll see where it all ends up, but that seems to be the trend at the moment. Okay, the next item is an executive session, number 20, for the purchase and sale of electrical power and land acquisition. So Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion for executive?
I move adjourn and go into an executive session for the purchase of sale, for the purchase and sale of electric power and land acquisition.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second ballman, O'Brien, that we enter executive session for the purposes stated. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Pizzato. Atech. Aye. Smart. Aye. Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.